And he mentioned, and mentioned your name, so he gave you credit. For, for X, X, for your work, and obviously to you. We're a good program.
Don't we have? So, particularly with the no staff lockdowns. Yeah.
Yeah. We make sure we're on the bus track. Glad I could help.
That boy's like a grown boy. He knows it's no better.
Hello, how are you?
People for not getting up that much over here.
You shake that too, do you? Yes, I should be me in the head. What?
I'm killing.
Yeah. I know, I'm going to fire law. You're trying to.
What the hell you say?
Do you know Hillary?
Good Sam.
From Hillary Clinton. She's the issue, not it, is Hillary. Do you remember that? Do you remember that?
Keep running into me here and there. I don't give a word.
Pretty good. Now, I've heard some of you though. Yeah, right now, I hope we do. We have to find answers before you wear out. Yeah, you can look at the price if you do that. For a little more risk, that's great for what you can.
Oh, I didn't go. I don't know what you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, pretty good. Now, I've heard some of you though. Yeah, right now, I hope we do. We have to find answers before you wear out. Yeah, you can look at the price if you do that. For a little more risk, that's great for what you can.
Oh, I didn't go. I don't know what you mean.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Hello, how are you?
I'm good. People for not getting up that much over here.
You shake that too, do you? Yes, I should be me in the head. I don't think God's.
I feel a little high from right there.
Yeah. Hey. I know, I've been doing fire law. You're trying to.
What the hell you say?
Do you know Hillary?
Good Sam.
From Hillary Clinton. She's the issue, not it, is Hillary. Do you remember that? 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 Do you know Hillary?
Good Sam.
From Hillary Clinton. She's the issue, not it, is Hillary. Do you remember that?
That's what we've had. They're from family gang. John, yeah. It keeps running into me here and there. I don't give a word.
Yeah. 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 Right now, I hope we do. We have to find answers before you wear out. Yeah, you can look at the price if you do that. For a little more risk, that's great for what you can. Listen to it for you.
Oh, I didn't go. I don't know what you mean.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
That's why I said I did. I think. I will. I'm writing. Of course, it has. Thanks.
Right. Yeah. 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 Right. Yeah. 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 Church Christmas year issue.
Hey, how are you? Jim Kilgore. Nice to meet you. What did I do wrong now? Oh, good. Yes. There's been some moving parts. I got it now. You'll get it. It's great to see. It's great to meet you, sir. All right, yes, sir.
Let's go ahead, 8:00. We'll get an instructive meeting, call a meeting of order. This is a council work session, September 6th, 2012. If you would, please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jack, would you give the indication, please?
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the beautiful weather that you've given us and the abundant rain that we've had lately. We ask that you be with each and every one here tonight. Help us to make the important decisions that we need to make. All these things we pray in your name.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome everyone here tonight. Again, by the usual seven, seven. Council members, Mr. Vegas Ford over here. Let's see again.
What was that? Expecting not to be here?
No, I wasn't hoping for that. I really wasn't.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Brian is not here tonight.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you that.
Thank you.
Can you hear me that? Mr. Huffman, council member. Our city attorney, Bobby Dyer. Scott Wood, our city manager. Mr. Goodman, council member. Mr. Rush, council member. Mr. Cummings, council member. And Ms. Stanton, our city clerk. So, when you need to call anybody a name or anything, you know who to call. You know who to talk to.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Yeah, talk to her. We have a presentation here, proclamation we'd like to present. Get that, Suzie, have that. Dr. Kilgore is here to accept this. Just go ahead and I'd like to read this proclamation, and it is Firefighters Appreciation Week. Whereas our nation can never forget the historic example of first responders and fire personnel when the worst attack on American soil occurred on September 11th, 2001. And whereas this year, the 11th anniversary of that heroism will be on Tuesday, September 11th, 2012, we invite our citizens to pause and remember that horrific day. We pledge never to forget what touched all of us then. And whereas the public safety and fire protection of our lives, businesses, community agencies, and homes in Canton is a major responsibility of the Canton City Fire Department. And whereas the sacrificial service of many volunteers through our county supplements that sustains much of the work of our paid firefighters. And whereas firefighters remain ready to respond in the event of fires in various stages of threat to human life and structures. And whereas our firefighters demonstrate acts of heroism in rescuing citizens from the threat of fire and often entering burning structures to bring them out to safety and medical treatment. And whereas our firefighters work dangerous accident scenes on our highways and streets, risking their own safety to extricate victims from vehicles. And whereas the entire population of the city of Canton is indebted to our fire service personnel. Therefore, we are resolved that the week of September 23rd to the 30th, 2012, be designated as firefighter appreciation week in our city. On behalf of our citizens, we, the members of the Canton City Council, do hereby make this proclamation and resolution. (APPLAUSE). Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you. Good Lord. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
Sir.
Have motion and second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, say the five saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. All right, now we are ten-minute public input period. We have a couple. Mr. Bill Bradley.
Look. Happy Firefire Week. That's nice. I was here months ago talking about something that occurred to me during a community service project. I had received a traffic infraction, needed to do community service. Suffered some indignities, followed the chain command, complained properly until I got up to Mr. Scott Wood. Mr. Scott Wood met me with no empathy. Said he wrote the offended party up, backhanded passive-aggressive slap in the face of a handwritten reprimand. Was asked what he'd do in this day and age, just handwrite stuff. It was horrible for me. Not a good experience, affected me and my family. Then I come to find out, two weeks ago, because a contact by a state employee let me know of an article in the Canton Six's Patch talking about Mr. Wood once again, in the paper again. Think that's twice involving two police officers. Right? Two of them. Police officer, you know, uphold the law, a police chief, makes a public statement saying, "This man asked him to run the legal background check on me, which violates my civil rights to the point where I'm sick." Sick to my stomach about what you're doing to this city. That's a good city, there's good people here, there's good policemen here. For any police officer having to deal with this dime store politics stuff that this guy is doing with suspensions and getting people fired, these police officers are unbelievable. The year they've had to have to deal with something like this is crazy. I feel bad for those affected, and I want to shake Officer Van Dandy's hand. He's been railroaded. But I'm digressing a little. It comes back to me, and what happened to me. That's what I'm here to talk about, my civil rights. And I know you guys know about it, but it seems like everybody's trying to act like it didn't happen. Just like when he got the one officer to terminate himself, where, you know, everything is just being swept under the rug. And I can't believe you guys are allowing it to go down like this. There's accountability. This is wrong. It's wrong, and I'm outraged. I mean, I really am. This behavior is being accepted and endorsed by you all, by not doing anything. It's outrageous, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. I, like many people on this council, I've met with you, you're good people, but you're not doing the right thing. What this man is doing is outrageous, and you should be ashamed. Gestapo tactic using, Napoleon complex, control freak, unworthy man, does not deserve to represent this city. And what he's doing is wrong. And I'm asking you guys to do something, because I'm a step away from getting a civil rights attorney. I'm a step away from calling E to scale U. Something's going to happen. I'm not going away. I am the public, and I'm outraged. And I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional about this, but you will be too, if somebody tried to run a legal background check on you. What do you want to know? I'm a veteran. I was a social worker. That's my background. If any state employee acted like you did, they'd be fired yesterday. I hope you guys do something about this. I'm not going away. That's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time. I appreciate what you men do, men and women, Canton PD, men and women, outstanding. Last thing you should have to be dealing with is nonsense from this man. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Joe. Somebody, I can't read the, is that Knox Bridge Road?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Joe, what's the last name?
Pothier.
P-O-T-H-I-E-R?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't read some of that. Come on in.
Okay.
Yes, count me in.
This is the first time I've been to one of these. I'm getting ready to purchase the property up on Knox Bridge Road, Leon Cochran's place. I've been trying, it's been going on for four months, the closing because of the title search in, because, you know, so many peoples passed away that is on the house. And I was just, I had a surveyor, I hired a surveyor to go out and survey the property, and that I own the easement going up Cochran Road. And I just, I just wasn't clear what it means, what them wanting to condemn the road, what that effect would have on me when I purchased the property.
Well, that's a good question. I'm not sure, are you exactly where you are on that?
I mean, the request that's coming to council tonight is to abandon it.
Yeah. Well, I'm not sure what that means.
You have an easement right now?
Yes, sir.
No, the easement would be on your prop. The property you're buying is where the easement is.
Right, yeah.
It leads to somebody else's property. So, it would just go back to being private ownership.
Okay. And that's basically.
The city wouldn't maintain it, is basically what that would mean.
Okay.
Would not maintain it.
Would not maintain it.
And there's a water lane going up there. Would that have anything to do, I mean, with?
That's a different question.
Okay, so everything would be okay. I mean, then I'd just maintain the road once. Because the lawyer was saying that it would drop the property value, it could drop the property value, the county would not maintain the road, which, to me, I don't mind maintaining.
It doesn't look like anybody's had any maintenance on it.
Exactly, there hasn't been none. And the county hasn't either, so, I mean, I guess it's, I guess it's already been abandoned.
Well, it became within the city's road system, because the city's on both sides.
Right.
So, the county said it's now the city's. City here actually took action to take it in.
Okay.
So, the city, the proposal is for the city to abandon it.
Okay. And that really wouldn't have no effect on what it means buying that property as far as?
It just means the city won't maintain the road.
Okay, that's fine. I don't.
I got a lot more than we need. Thank you.
As long as you're, I want to make sure you're okay with that, because, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'm not asking if it's.
If all the property owners, who they made the requests, that Cochran Lane we're talking about, right?
Yes.
I think the people selling to you are the ones who's asked to do it.
Oh, really?
Nope. I'm not wrong. Kent, the Leon Cochran property, there are four pieces of property that are adjacent to Cochran Lane. Leon Cochran property is one of the two properties that is on the backside of the easement. The easement is on property that currently is owned by Clifford Jean Payne. That's where the easement is. The easement is on the Clifford Payne property. It ends at Cochran property, which he's proposing to purchase.
That's in section seven of your agenda package. Section, is that my? Yeah.
Yeah, so it's later, later in the agenda.
Yeah, okay. We'll take a look at it then, but where is this gentleman on this street?
He's one of those back parcels. There's one of the patches that shows the property owner, and he has the Leon Cochran property.
Is he to the left, or you to the left?
Yes, to the left.
And come back.
But it's the end of easement, so I was wrong. The easement is not on your property, it leads to your property.
Correct.
So, he's parcel two, then, it looks like.
But he would be the one that would care, if he didn't care.
Yes, he has parcel number two under contract, purchase from, will you, of Cochran.
Okay.
As I understand it. But they support the.
You know, the only concern that I would have from your perspective is whether or not there's truly, truly an agreement between the property owners there as to how that would be maintained.
Okay.
You know, because, well, I guess two of them, do the front two parcels there, one and three, do they actually access that Cochran Lane, or do they come off of Highway 20?
Both of them, well, property to the right, which is the Payne property, does have access off Cochran Lane, but it also has driveway access off of Highway 20. The property that's on the western side of Cochran Lane has no access to Cochran Lane whatsoever. It's part of a small retail commercial operation. I believe it's Amoco Transmission, and their curb code is to the west of Cochran Lane.
So, potentially, this gentleman, who is parcel four, on the far right?
Eddie in London. It's another Cochran.
Oh, I see Eddie in London.
Eddie in London, I think they're children. No one lives back there. I believe basically three to four pieces of property really on market for sale.
And the length of this trail, Lane?
300 feet.
251.2 feet. So, he could get maybe stuck with maintaining the whole thing.
Well, there are other property owners that are.
Yeah, but unless they have some kind of agreement between them, and if he, is there a house where you're going?
Yes.
And if you get on that house, if the others decide they don't want to maintain it or anything, then, you know, to your standards, you may not be able to, you may have to end up doing it yourself. I don't know if that's a problem.
Current condition is that there's some old concrete that's been poured in places. There's some old asphalt that's been poured in places. Part of it's dirt, part of it's gravel. There's some rises and dips, a good foot and a half or so within the travelway now.
And the other house up there is for sale. So, Eddie Cochran, he's selling his place up there. So, I guess if he, me and the new owner.
So, in other words, do we, do we have to encourage from all four property owners that they want that abandoned? I guess would be my question.
They've all been notified. All four property owners have been notified. We sent a letter by certified mail. I have the cards where they have received notice of the request by the one property owner for abandonment. Our office has not received a telephone call, a wiry, or anything in regards to the proposed abandonment.
Right. So, between now and the next meeting, we would be making a decision about this at the very next meeting, although whether to abandon or not. Just so you know that. Apparently, everybody is aware of it, so if they had any objection, hopefully they would make that known between now and then.
Okay. Could the, could the other people, if we abandon the road, could they restrict his access to his property?
There's a recorded easement. It was already an easement, and at some point.
Does your lead chairman ease it? Or is it?
Yeah, I believe it does. I have.
It shows it online. All the way from Highway 20?
No, I don't believe it does, from all way.
But he might have property.
There is a recorded easement from Highway 20 back to the beginning of his property. It's one of the attachments that you have that runs across the Payne property. The easement was there, then, for whatever reason, Payne's and Cochran's did a right-of-way deed to Cherokee County for county maintenance. The city annexed the fourth and final parcel after the right-of-way deed was executed. That's the reason the abandonment is with the city now, because all four parcels are city property in accordance with the state law that came a city road maintenance purpose.
And that was back when River Green or something was some of that?
Yes.
To that extent?
The three parcels of Cochran and Payne were annexation part of the River Green. The parcel where the Amoco is came in after the original three parcels were annexed and after the right-of-way deed to Cherokee County was executed and recorded.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we may be able to resolve that one, but we may have already resolved that on our agenda here. Okay, that's the only two that we have on public input, so we'll entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda. Actually, I guess we don't, that will be considered for the next meeting, unless it's, all these are minutes, with the exception of D, which is the financials for information purposes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
On the August 16th council meeting, I'd like to make a statement.
Okay.
In setting up the agenda for these meetings, we do have a procedure and a sequence of events, and I got to say that I was shocked and very disappointed at this meeting, where we had a guest and visitor come in and make a public request for council to make a decision on offering of $20,000. I want to know why it was listed under guests and visitors, why wasn't it not under new business, where it should have been, and also, how come I didn't receive any information on it until two minutes before the meeting? But we did ahead, we moved ahead, and we shouldn't have, but we did, and we voted for that to take place. But I think that was totally out of sequence, inappropriate for that action to be taken at that time. And I just want to make sure that when we have guests and visitors come in, we aren't going to be thrown into a situation where we're going to have to make a decision and vote upon something without proper information.
I totally agree. Thank you. So noted. Okay. I would assume that.
What's that? Yeah.
I am.
You have, if that's a recent thing, we're.
I think we probably ought to approve these minutes.
Any minute.
Okay, we'll have a motion, we have a second. The minutes of August 13th, 15th, 16th. I guess that's it. We'll knock the actual financials, we don't do that. We have a motion and a second. Any corrections or changes? Look, one right here, I think I had some. Okay. and vote upon something without proper information.
I totally agree.
Thank you.
So noted. Okay. I would assume that...
What's that?
Yeah. I am.
You have, if that's a recent thing, we're...
I think we probably ought to approve these minutes.
Any minute.
Okay, we'll have a motion. We have a second. Just the minutes of, uh, August thirteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth. Um, I guess that's it. We'll knock the actual financial, we don't do that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any corrections or changes? Um, let me look one right here. I think I had some. No changes, no corrections? If not, those in favor, simply by saying aye. Opposed, no. All members vote for the motion. Okay, old business. Discussion of Fire Protection Services' five-year plans. Mr. Barrisford, do you want to...
Yes, thank you. Uh, due to the revelations of this past week with a number of things that have been looked at, uh, there have been a number of the council members working on a task force to continue the process of developing a plan, as you requested, five-year plan for the city fire department. We have done that. Uh, in the spirit for which we have been trying to move the city fire department to a ISO three rating, has been hit with many roadblocks, been hit with many roadblocks, the latest of which is the tax or fee. By the way, there has not been a definitive ruling on this matter, but we decided to avoid further discussion and move ahead on this very important issue, build the needed fire stations. Being that we have not had a mileage increase in the past four to five years has not helped the situation. With the trends of lawsuits, recalls, timeline delays, outstanding influence and pressure compounded the issue. We are pleased to announce our five-year plan.
I know this has been long awaited for. This plan is strictly how we're going to build the needed departments, fire stations, and et cetera, and we will have to reevaluate our revenue flow, and that is something we're close on right now. And if I could pass this over to Mr. Rush.
Well, thank you, Mr. Barrisford. Uh, yeah, we prepared this financial plan based on the five-year projection of building two fire stations, and we had, we had in there, and it's not, apparently, it's not noted in here, in 2017, I believe it was, we were going to start the second fire station. So, these numbers are rough because we were preparing them, and then we had to deviate from the fire tax at 1.25 mils to a fire service fee, and we hope by the, uh, I mean, these are rough, so we've got to fine tune the numbers somewhat. By the end of, or by the next meeting, we should have these numbers and the fire fee delineated to more specific numbers. But the goal for this was to, to produce two fire stations and to staff those two fire stations, and then at the end of five years, we have to look where the, where the city is and where the costs are and where the, the third station and the fire training center would go, which would give us the ISO three rating. But the whole goal of this is to get two stations, to get the coverage we need, and to pursue a ISO three rating somewhere down the line.
Does this take into consideration closing the downtown or not?
At this time, no. What, what the, the extended plan would be, we'll have the Canton North, which is referred to as Royal Canyon. It would be called Camp, excuse me, Canton West, because there is a fire station that's designated at Canton North, Canton West, and then the Canton East, which will be over near the hospital. The next, the third will fall just outside of this plan, but it is in the process of looking at seriously the bluffs where it needs to be. Once that is completed, then we'll look at moving the downtown to the bluff, but that's five years out, and that's probably long, I'll be long gone, and you don't have to worry about it.
So, basically, this is the plan, but there hasn't been a final determination of the revenue source?
Uh, the revenue source, uh...
Well, we, we've got a plan to, to get the revenue source. It's going to be a fire fee, and we're, what we're doing now is fine tuning on how that fee will be assessed. There will not be an ad valorem, and there will not be any...
I would really like to go back to the committee once again that I asked back some time ago to take a look at this, which was, I believe, Mr. Barrisford, since you put a lot of time into it, Mr. Cummins and Jack, I had asked to take a look at that. I would like for, for that committee to evaluate this and to help come up and make a recommendation to us, to this full council regarding the proposed source of revenue or type of fee or whatever it would be.
I would be more than happy to be a partner or a member on that committee, as long as we aren't going to be railroaded into one section. I want to have an open mind going in there.
That's, that's going to be up to the committee whether they got an open mind or not. So, I would assume they would have, and I would hope they would, and I would hope they would begin to meet, no later than next week on that. So, set up some...
Yes. Um, please, maybe it's going to be held during daytime. I'm probably during business hours. I probably would like to defer either Mr. Rush or Mr. Hutton because I'm still working at a job, so...
Is it, would it be your two that be in the daytime, or would you want to have it in the evening, or do you have a reason?
Uh, daytime is better in a...
I have no problem with the evening. But your daytime's better for you?
Yeah.
Mr. Hutton, would you like to serve on that and please, gentlemen?
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
So, if my understanding correctly, the committee that you formed on July sixth, you want me as chairman to continue as chairman, and I will call a meeting, and they can bring it forward. I wasn't aware of any task force. I had heard that it's been volunteers or something, but I'm...
Change the name to protect the innocent?
Uh, and I wasn't aware that council members had the rights to form task force quasi-commissions that just actually belonged in the charter to you, but I'd be glad to lead this forward.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor?
I have the floor, Mr. Barrisford.
Okay, I'll, I'll get to you.
I have the floor, so please wait until I get finished.
We're happy to.
And I'd like to just reiterate one thing. When this council decided that the city of Canton would continue to operate and control the fire department under the city umbrella, I immediately indicated that I accepted that decision and would support it. But instead of embracing my support, several members of this council, absent any participation on my part, undertook what I considered an inadequate and highly contestable approach to expanding fire services, other known as a fire district ordinance. The only purpose of that proposed method was to bypass a senior tax exemption passed by referendum by the citizens in 2001. These council members believed that they can override the wishes of the voters. My repeated public logical and now substantiated objections to the method of being proposed were met with all sorts of personal attacks, outright distortion of facts, and underhanded attacks, including the outright usurping of the mayor's authority as granted by the city charter. One council member even disrespected the mayor in a public meeting. Press may print quotations like stirring the pot, playing games, bold-faced lies from losers who can't accept that they are wrong with grace and dignity, but the citizens know who those quotations refer to, and it is those who can't admit that they are wrong and move forward. It's a shame that some politicians, when they do not get their way without opposition, get nasty and personal. The bottom line is, the approach taken by the majority of council has been found to be a major risk if implemented to the city and could cost thousands of dollars in legal expenses in what would be most likely a losing cost for the city. Now is the time to move forward and develop Plan B, and I wholly accept what the task force here has generated, and will work with the members of the committee to reach the goals. But I'm only willing to do this if we're big enough to, and professional enough to set aside personal feelings and work together in public open meetings, not behind closed doors, determine how we can best meet the service needs of our citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, you have something else?
Okay. Do I have something else?
That's what, that was my question.
Yes.
Okay, well, let's hear it.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'm not a politician. That, secondly, closed doors. There was no closed doors because there was not a quorum. Thirdly, the task force was meeting, and we have all the right world as council members to discuss issues apparent to the city. I feel terrible that you feel that we do not have that right. We do have that right. That is a challenge. So, it is going to be a tough meeting, but I tell you something, I'm a big man. I can handle it. But the problem was, ramroading, as you were doing, was unacceptable. So...
If you don't mind speaking to me, you can refer to anybody you like.
Okay.
Please refer to me. Thank you.
Well, at the time, you were not ramrodding. You were directing the ramrodding, but you were not ramrodding, so I was looking at him. But this is a bigger, this is a bigger issue than some pettiness that's going on between me and my colleague across the table. I feel it's very important to have a fire department that we are proud of and will be accomplished, and that will be the task, and it will be taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Barrisford. I, I really don't think anyone disagrees that we want the best possible fire service that we can, we can have in the city at the most economical cost. Um, all right. Next, discussion of proposed pension plan service agreement.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Barrisford?
Uh, I have here to pass that around. This needs the signature of the mayor and the city manager so that we can move ahead with the plan proposed, some months bills, and all that needs to be done. It's, just pass that to, this two of them, they got to sign the signature of it. You already have, you already got a copy.
I do. Where is it?
I have a hard enough time keeping my stuff, people don't. But if you don't have one, I'll be more happy to get you one. Okay. But those, the tabs in there, the flags are in there, go ahead and get it signed so that we can get this process underway and moving down the road. We want to try to accomplish, because we're looking at hiring, additional personnel, department, et cetera, and we want to have this in place so we can get that accomplished.
Anything else?
Point of order?
Yes?
I believe to sign any contracts, the contracts have to come to a vote for the council, and the council has to approve such signature of any contract that the city enters. So, such occurrence has not happened, and therefore, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dyer, but don't all contracts have to be voted on by council and approved by council?
Yeah, I thought that was what you commented, that you didn't vote on at the next meeting.
Right, that's what I, that's what you were saying. So, no, he's saying you ought to sign them, and I don't think that's a possibility at this time.
No, I don't think, no, I think that it would need to be reviewed between now and then and, and for, for a vote at the next council meeting.
It was, it was voted on some months ago, six zip.
Not the actual agreement.
Not the actual agreement.
But the agreement was to be looked at by Mr. Dyer, which he has done, and it passed on. That was what the holdup was. But to make everybody happy, we've waited this long, two more weeks doesn't hurt me.
That makes everybody happy. You've accomplished something.
It's hard to believe.
Mr. Mayor? Yes? Mr. Hutton?
I have a little knowledge of, of that, not a lot of knowledge, and I'm sure as soon as I find my copy or wherever it may be. My question, I guess I'll direct that to you, but I'm talking to Mr. Barrisford.
I understand, I understand.
I have a hard time doing it because I would still look him in the eye.
I understand.
Uh, Mr. Barrisford, I would like to think that we would have more bids or contracts or proposals or than just one. Are we, or the question is, are we going to entertain more than one?
Mr. Barrisford, you have?
I don't have the exact date, but when we said we will go and turn our program over to One America, that was voted on, six zip, and that's what we have done. We have moved that process forward. We, we had to, can One America or, or the people downtown bring her, bring us, do they represent more than one source? Can, in other words, can they present, like, when I was in the insurance business, I would present three quotes from three different insuring companies.
I, I believe they do represent others, and they, I guess, do do that. They, they represent several, I believe.
If they were, if there's several in there, or could they supply us with one or two others just for comparison purposes?
I believe they, I believe they picked this one as what they thought might be the best. That'd be my assumption now.
Okay.
I don't know that...
Is that right?
That's correct.
We think it's the best.
This group has done more conversions in the state and nationally than the others throughout there. They have a program that will make it a seamless type program to move from the GMA to their program so that, and currently, we're shelling out money to the GMA because the stock market has tanked, needless to say, but we're obligated to maintain a level of 7.75% each year, and that difference, if it's a three or a four gain, we're picking up that difference. We're sitting right now, probably pushing in over two and a half million dollars.
I'm not questioning that whatsoever. I'm really not. And if you and the committee have gotten, gotten together, and you're coming and saying, we've reviewed what they have to offer, and this is the one we select, then I'm fine with it. But I just thought it'd be best to, if, if the committee has done that, then that's fine.
Yeah, I, I think that he is...
But I totally agree with you in the savings and, and what you're saying. Oh, I can't look at, uh, some of the savings and things. I'm, I'm not opposed to that whatsoever. I'm all for it.
Yes. Mr. Barrisford?
Uh, again, I have to disagree. When we voted on this, the main thrust at that time was that the savings and administrative costs were significant to the city. In reality, the administrative costs going to this proposed plan are higher. Uh, the analysis to decide switching this pension plan with over 5 million in assets and probably hundreds of employees eventually either enrolled or receiving in benefits has not been thoroughly undertaken. The cost to the taxpayers has not been analyzed either. Some council members have been enamored with a fancy presentation from a slick salesman, but when I ask this same salesperson for quantitative answers to questions, I get evasive answers. They have refused up to this point to provide complete answers to how much this plan will cost the city. They refuse to answer how some specific charges, as identified in the documents that I've received, are computed, and how many dollars did he add up to. They have been unable to provide references of other Georgia cities where they are performing the same services they propose. You will hear, and I just covered this, that the administrative costs were lower, but they're not. They're actually higher. The plan proposed, the proposed plan provider has no track record with a GMA defined benefit plan that which we would be switching from, which is GMA. I was told also that the council member who was pushing this proposal has never talked to our HR person regarding our current plan to substantiate valid reasons for switching from what we already have. The council member pushing this proposal was contacted by another broker who has significant experience with GMA defined benefit plans and was rebuffed with the decision has already been made. I posed questions, generic questions, to both the proposed vendor and the rebuffed vendor, and here are the answers that I got to these four generic questions. The first question, how many defined benefit plans has One America switched from GMA? The answer they gave me is, we have experience with 10 plans from GMA and a multitude from other providers. Two plans are currently in transition mode. They have never switched a defined benefit plan from GMA. The rebuffed vendor or broker answered to the same question, how many defined plans have they done? Three. Not only did they say three, they identified it. Hayfield, Alpharetta, Peachtree City. Second question, how many defined benefit plans does One America currently administer for Georgia municipalities? I don't care about California where they're broke. And the answer from One America was, One America has over 300 pension slash DB plans nationwide with over 3.4 billion in assets. Again, no answer to how many they administer in Georgia. The other rebuffed vendor answered to the same question, four. I currently, or they currently administer plans for Hayfield, Alpharetta, Peachtree City, Cartersville. They also do work for other municipalities, which include Garden City, Powder Springs, and they have multiple municipal clients in South Carolina. Question three, what is the performance of One America on these plans? Please specify net performance after all charges and fees for one-year and five-year time periods. The answer from the proposed vendor, this information is proprietary to the municipality that sponsors the plan, as we all know, our records are open records, by the way, that sponsors the plan and is not appropriate for One America to release. The answer from the rebuffed vendor, Peachtree City's 311 results. Note, returns depend upon the asset mix, and they are 42% domestic equities, 18% international, 40... 40% fixed income. That's the only client they had say we have with a five-year history. But in the one year, they were 1.43%, three years, 19.77%, five years, 4.81%. Fourth question, what experience does One America have redesigning defined benefit plans under Georgia statutes? Identify the municipalities that they have redesigned plans for. This requires permission from every client. One America does not release client information without, only give us the names or references. We would provide the same courtesy for the city of Canton. Well, in a public record, they wouldn't provide the same thing. I have a video which they presented to Doraville where they mentioned the city of Canton as one of theirs. Now, the rebuffed vendor, what experience does that vendor have redesigning defined benefit plans under Georgia statutes and identify the municipalities? Peachtree City, Douglas County, Fayette County, Hayville, Alpharetta, Cartersville, and Garden City. Now, my whole point here is we have not, we're dealing with something that'll go out 50, 60 years, and we have not done our homework on this. We need to have more than one proposal from somebody that has not done a single defined benefit plan in, completely, yeah, they got a couple they're working on, but has not done a single defined benefit plan within the state of Georgia. And I am recommending, and whether the council wants to go it, I am recommending that we do not proceed with these particular documents until we have had the opportunity to investigate others who have significantly more experience relative to Georgia defined benefit plans. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Yes?
Prior to the due diligence that Mr. Cummings has done with the four questions, he sent a generic questionnaire that he pulled out of some book and passed it off as his questions, which is probably copyright issue there, but anyway, he drilled them down to such a level that it would take six attorneys probably to try to figure out what he was trying to find out. And I appreciate him doing all that wonderful background check. It got to a point where they needed to move on to other issues, so it became a situation, I'm sure, that there was some pushback. I understand the importance of what we're trying to do here. I understand that we did pick the GMA, and it's not a good program. It's costing the city a bundle. Also, he made another point about their cost. Their cost was half. Now, I don't know what the manipulation he's doing with his numbers. I'm sure there is something there that will make it figure out that we'd end up paying more for the administrative fees, but the administrative fees were less by far, and I'm going to have to pull it out of my memory bank, but maybe $9,000. So, if that's the case, what's the point?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. One last, one last point. There's several inadequate statements in what Mr., or inaccurate states will Mr. Bearford just make. I didn't pull those questions out of the book. I pulled those questions, I pulled those questions out of the documents supplied by One America. They went and supplied us documents. Every question that I have came from their specific documents. They've got charges in there that they have not clarified called IOC charges. Now, that's number one that's wrong, and I'll just address the administrative. In the documents, and Mr. Dyer can confirm this, and if not, I can go to the documents, the administrative charge, the administrative charge is not even a stated charge at a fixed amount. It is 30 basis points of the value of the, of the assets in the account. The market value of the assets in the account was $5,264,241 as of January 1, and at 30 basis points, that would be $15,792. In addition to that $15,792, they will charge us $5,500 actuarial charge as an account plus $25 per participant. Using 125 employees, that's $8,625, or a total of $24,417 based on the figures that we had as of January 1 this year. GMA charged us $18,132 to do the same services. That in my book is a $6,000 increase and not a savings. The only point that I'm making is, we are again rushing as a council into making a significant decision about, that affects our employees, it affects our retirees, it affects the contribution this city has to make to the pension plan, and we're doing it without any comparable proposal. We're doing it without adequate answers to the proposal that we do have, and I just can't go along with it. Mr. Mayor? Yes?
I resign from that part. If you want to appoint Mr. Cummings, have at it, and I'll tell you one thing. Three years from now, we'll still be talking about the GMA program, and the city will be shelling out the money to make up the difference. And just see how fast he can move on this one. Took us a year to move on the fire, dude. So, have at it. I'm done. I'm out of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Do what you want.
There's a suggestion I do agree with, is appointing a committee to do that, and I don't care whether I'm on the committee or not. But I think there should be a committee that looks at multiple proposals, as Mr. Huffman said, and comes up with the best plan. That's all I'm asking for. I've got no dog in this fight, and I don't care, but I think that we have a moral obligation to make sure that what we're doing related to this topic is so thoroughly thought out, we just cannot go and run off with what I've seen. It is totally inadequate.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Yes?
This rebuffed individual, and he's referred to numerous times, I don't recall who it was, but the fact is, I checked with our city attorney, and being this is going to be a service. We don't have to go through bids or any of these other issues, and we can state that we have selected, which we had, and if he felt rebuffed, too bad. That's the way it goes. But to keep calling and coming back and saying, and I'm the culprit, I don't have a problem identifying who did this, rebuffing, but we did it because the council said, and we brought these people in to make a presentation. They did it last year, we looked at it last year, and we're looking at it again this year. Hello, another year's gone by.
Okay, I think we've, I think we've heard enough of that.
Yeah, on that one.
So, what I, what I think, Mr. Huffman, would you chair a committee to look, look at that? Will you serve on it?
No.
Okay. Mr. Cummings?
I'll serve with Mr. Huffman.
Jack, you want to?
I can serve.
You had any problem leading after hours?
Uh, no.
Okay. That'll be fact, it is to take a look and that proposal and go ahead. One thing I would like to ask is, our city manager, have you, have you had looked or reviewed any of this information, and you had any recommendation or thoughts on this at all?
Well, I've met with the, with the, with the One America folks. My focus, frankly, has been more on being sure that we retain the defined benefits provision, be sure that we retain the current multiplier. Those are my primary interest on behalf of employees, more so than which company or program provides those services.
Okay. So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily have reviewed this to confirm that?
I've not read that agreement at this point.
Okay, okay. Well, I would hope that you would, you would attend it and work with these gentlemen in that committee if you would, please. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm see. Discussion, solicitation, BSC, the SCADA system. Mr. Bearford, next?
Well, I tell you what. We discussed it last meeting, kind of, and it's important that we go ahead and get this set up where we can go out and get bids, and I think it's not required unless it be pointed out that it's inappropriate to do this, but I'd like to say a head nod by everybody and say, let's get this program going. And at the two-week council meeting, we'll vote affirmative to go ahead and get bids on SCADA, because if we don't, it's going to be into the late part of summer next year, and if we do it pretty doggone quick, like next two weeks, and get this in, we can get the program started and have it up and running by spring. And I think that's what we need to do. So, I'd like to ask if we can have the unofficial head nod.
The only question that I would have is, is it within our prerogative to authorize the bidding of that since we don't own it, that it's the, that it is the Canton Building Authority that actually would have to authorize that?
On what?
A what?
I'm sorry.
Is that not the SCADA system?
SCADA system for the reservoir, we own the reservoir.
No, Canton Building Authority owns the reservoir.
We own Canton Building Authority.
Well, I think you'll find, quite honestly, that we do not control the DDA. We call appointments and monies, of course, but anything that they wish to do, we don't have control over.
Well, how come we voted on the reservoir at different times for different?
Well, I think it had to do with, with, with agreement to underwrite the funding, basically. And I don't know that this is something, the funding may already be there.
I think the agreement of the joint agreement is with the city.
I believe so, too.
The joint operation agreement is between the city.
So, the, the, the reservoir wouldn't have any say as to whether what you did?
I don't know. That's the first time I've heard that. I don't know that.
Well, it seems that all along, we as a council have been holding this stuff hostage to Cobb, not the, the building authority. So, I think it behooves us to move this thing forward. All we're asking them to do is go out for bids. We're not approving any contract, we're just suggesting bids, and according to the Cobb County Water Authority, it's gotten to an urgent stage, and that we need to move on this quickly.
No, that's, that's fine with me. I mean, you know, that's what you want to do. And if you want to go ahead and authorize, you're welcome to authorize. I just, it just seemed kind of odd to me that we, we don't authorize the bidding for the DDA or the, any other authority.
But the city councils voted on other issues. The reservoir manager and other things have been voted on, so I mean, I, this is the first I've heard of the building authority.
This is the first time, this is the first time DDA's been mentioned. And I think, who was in attendance with the meeting last week with Cobb Water? Mr. Wood was. Didn't we, didn't they explain that they have some of their legal rights or to go out and not have to go out and bid on this item? That they, it was in conjunction with some of the contracts they already had, that this is not an item that they have to put out on bid?
I don't recall that precise wording, but what they, what they indicated was that they, they needed to go out and get the bids and get this done, and that they were almost in a position to go out and do it themselves and get it done and bill us for it.
Mr. Wood, do you recall?
I recall the discussion. I'm not sure exactly what the point was that was being made.
The point, the point was is that this system is, because of the technology and so forth, is that they are in present contracts with the company that supplies this, does other, does other reservoirs or other projects with them, and because of the specialty of that technology, that they are not going to send this thing out?
No, I think, I think what they did say is that they were going to specify the, the system, people that are connected in, that are interconnected in their other system, but they're going out for bids on the contractor to fill the system, but they're having to use a specific system. So, they're not looking to go into a different set of electronics, just, that's, that's what they indicated. They were going to go out for bids, but they were going to specify that one.
It's sole source situation, I believe, is what, that, that's already come before us, I think.
Right.
So, is there, is there a concurrence?
The only question I had was, is this in any way any conflict with the ongoing negotiations? I know you asked Mr. Wood to update us, and I haven't received any update on these negotiations, so I don't know if there's any conflict proceeding with this. And then, just to cover all bases, I'd say, let's give a head nod to tell, to tell the Canton Building Authority to go ahead and obtain bids. I would think that would be the proper thing to do.
Well, I think.
I don't know about Canton, but before you say that.
It's their money, that's the bonds.
I don't, I don't know if it is, but if you're talking about the bonds, I understand the deal of the bonds, I have to look at it all again, the city has bought back all the assets, that's just a source of the money for the, for the bonds. So, they, they would be the city's ownership, I don't know who owns it.
So.
Why are we getting into this obfuscation? We always do it. And let's just go out and get the damn thing bid and see if we're going to do it. Cobb will do it.
Well, I think we're not going to, I mean, I think that's what we're going to go ahead and authorize and to go ahead and proceed. We still have to vote on it officially in the next meeting, anyway.
I have a question.
Yes?
I was just, a little while ago, for these secret meetings I was holding in the room closet downstairs, and now I just heard that there was some sort of negotiation that used to say that there's some.
Everyone was privy to that.
Well, that was the water, I thought. I mean, that was a reservoir reg.
Reservoir manager's meeting, I said.
Yeah, the reg schedule.
No, that's, yes.
That's the meeting I'm talking about.
Yeah, but that's not the one. He's just referred to something about this.
No, I'm not referring to any meeting. I'm referring to an email that I believe was sent out to all of us.
Right.
That there was some, some ongoing negotiations. I don't, if the name comes to me, it was Carpenter or something like that. I don't even know who the individual was, and that we would be updated, and that, that was my question.
Right.
I don't know.
I've got any notes.
While we're, while we're trying to get the head nod going, the next item on the agenda was the reservoir office. Let's nod our head on both of those so we can get those two things done and brought back next council meeting to vote on it.
Is there any concurrence?
I don't know how to nod my way to, my head two different ways.
Well, I'm sure you would.
Okay, let's, let's one at a time. Everybody, most, most of you are in concurrence with the SCADA system.
Yes.
All right, okay. How about the BSC for the reservoir office?
Okay. One clarification, according to, to Mr. Glenn Page, that the, they're going to go for solicitation to bids on the reservoir office, but it's going to be more of a design build as opposed to what we were presented here, so that they were going to make reductions and corrections and modify it, so it wasn't going to have that high price tag. But they also said that they needed to get, get going on that, too, so.
Then I have one question, and maybe I can have it both ways. Will we get the opportunity to see what the final bids are and bid and vote on that before they proceed and build the building?
I think, of course.
I think we'd have to prove those BSC to us or Canton Building Authority.
The only thing that we're asking for, and it's, I'll try to simplify it, we're asking, can we go out for bids so that we know how much it's going to cost? And we will not vote on who is going to do the contracts or anything else. It's a simple matter of research.
Next up, Main Street Work Program and Funding. Basically, I, that's not you this time. Let me make sure of that. I want to put that on, basically, because we had, we had heard from Bill and Ginger particularly on, on their sort of long-range plan, short and long-range plan of how they wanted to approach downtown development. And, you know, we didn't actually take a formal vote at that time on it, but I, I didn't hear any real objection to the plan that they had presented. And I And I think that it behooves us to, to look at that and to consider, in the future certainly, and hopefully in the fair and near future, funding mechanisms in order for them to do some of the things that, that they want to do in that plan. And I think one of those things is gonna be the rental tax, rental car tax. I think we need to look at that again, and I will bring that up, hopefully, in the next meeting to maybe be considered at that point. Or if not, we will look at it at the next work session in October. But I think we, we need to look at it and evaluate it, because it would be a source of revenue that would be helpful and that would, we would not be out of competition with other cities around us like Woodstock, who has exactly the same tax. So I think it would be something we might want to consider at that time.
The only comment I would have is, and we're talking about funding, but we don't know how much funding. I think we need some, some numbers attached to some of the projects, because, you know, renting a billboard on I-575, how much for how long, and that, that sort of stuff. And I can honestly say this, I will not support a tax on the rental car company.
Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, discussion of the procedure for city manager evaluation.
Actually, we decided this on April 12th. And the basic decision was that each council member would submit an evaluation for the six-month period to be submitted by October 15, 2012. And so, and it went further on to say, if no form is submitted, that council member's opinion will not be considered. So we've already stated the method that we were supposed to evaluate the city manager back on April 12th.
The reason that I put it on initially, and before I, I guess, realized what you're saying there, is that I just wanted to make sure what format this, this body wanted, wanted that. And if they wanted a, I believe Mr. Wood provided the use in that form for evaluation city manager. It's been several months ago, I think. You know, it has, it came from the university, I believe.
It was something last year, but I don't think...
Well, whatever format, either do we need a standard format, or we just want each person to write up, make their own notes, and then when we get together, discuss them. That's all I want to know. Yes, sir?
I believe last year, Mr. Beresford had a form that he submitted to the council that we did an evaluation. If that same form is still available, it seemed adequate. And I think we can just use that.
You still got that, Mr. Beresford?
I'm not in the form business anymore.
Okay.
But what, basically, what it amounted to was, if you look at the charter, there's a description of the city manager's duties. And I think we all have a copy of the city manager, the charter. And therefore, just write your own essay on those points and call that what we're gonna be doing, so.
Okay. Each person do their own thing, so to speak, according to the charter.
That's probably the best way to do it.
Based on that, okay. Sounds good. And the reason I brought that up at this time was because I think in the meeting that we had, we agreed that that needed to be done by October the 15th. So sometime around then, and we would hope that everyone who wishes to provide evaluation at that time, and I hope it'll be everyone, would have that information. Let me just say, I'll be out of the office from, I think it's Friday, the October, I mean, I think it's Friday the 5th until Wednesday the 10th at a conference. Well, that would not be a regular, then we'd need to probably do that the Thursday before. You could, that could be, that'd be the first Thursday. You could do it the Thursday before. I'll be back the Thursday after, but I think it's... I don't think the exact date is critical as far as that goes, but we did say...
We can change it to the end of this month, you know, like, to, to say, it ain't September 30th.
Okay.
We found a plan, so everybody else is in concurrence.
All right. Next up, discussion, business license increase. The only reason I put that on was I wanted to make sure that, that everyone was aware. We've already done this, as a matter of fact, but I don't think we really, at that point, had a, had a, an idea of comparative rates.
This is already in the tabs?
This is a little...
A little bit different.
Basically, what, what this indicated, and I don't know that it makes any difference to any member on this council, but what it, what it says is that if you're a single business owner, and you're the only person in that business, the minimum, the minimum amount for your license and administrative fee now is $125 for the city of Canton. For Ball Ground, the minimum is only $55. For Woodstock, it's $60, and that includes a $30 administrative fee. Holly Springs is 65. Cherokee County is 60. And then it goes down, they get hired, like Sandy Springs, looks like 115. 86 on Kennesaw, 90 on Smyrna, Alpharetta 150, or a home business, it says it's 90. And Roswell, minimum of 150. So I guess, you know, outside the county, they move up a little bit there. But within, within the city, within Cherokee County, we, for, for the small business, we have the highest cost by, by far than any other city or the unincorporated area. The total, as far as the total amount of cost of the business license and administrative fee. But that's just, just for information purposes, if it has an interest that we need to, we need to consider with that. It makes no difference, but, I'm sorry, Jack, go ahead.
Just open for discussion.
Sure, sure.
You know, we've talked about this many years, trying to bring people into downtown. And, you know, certainly, they've got to pay lots of different fees and things. I think we should be competitive at Woodstock or Cherokee County, certainly. You know, $145 is a tremendous amount of money, but we need to help out the businesses wherever we can.
Yeah, a large, a large number of the businesses are small, in-home businesses and so forth. And I think that, you know, they're, they're bearing a disproportionate amount of cost, so to speak. And so, think about it, between now and the next meeting, if there's any interest in, you know, making any changes or not, that's not...
I just have one question. Does, if, if we were to modify the fee, would it have an effect, an impact on the budget? Would it make, would it be a problem?
Been a week before you modified it.
Well, they were not gonna be up.
Yeah, yeah. Would've caused an impact if you...
Well, it will affect our budget that we've already accepted. There's a, there's a number in there based on...
If you took no action, it would have no effect on our budget, correct, Nathan?
Yes, sir.
If you take in positive action, obviously, it has a positive...
Yes, sir.
Okay. In other words, you did consider this increase in the budget?
No.
Okay, then, then, not, you said, not exactly right.
No, I said, if you took no action, it would have no effect on the budget. That's right.
Well, it'll have an effect on the budget, because you have more revenue, because it wasn't considered in the budget.
If you take no action on this administrative fee recommendation...
On this amount of...
It's already adopted.
It's already adopted.
Ever since last month.
Well, if you don't, if this does not remain in place, if this does not remain in place, it will have no effect.
Okay, got you.
Correct, Nathan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I...
One other thing, with this, considering the number of employees, the way to do that, because you have small businesses where they have one, two, three employees and everything, you know, larger business, we can understand some of that.
Right. Actually, the city of Canton is really, somebody may have to hit me with this. My understanding is based on gross receipts. And it is based on a certain standard industry classification number, which involves the degree of profitability. So different industries have different margins of profit, and based on their gross receipts, it determines how much their business license is. And I don't believe that ours involves, that our method involves number of employees.
That's not an option in Canton.
Okay. It is in the others, so if we did something, it'd have to change the whole thing. But, but what we had was, a minimum prior to this time was $100, which is still higher than the others, but it's been that way, I know, for quite a few years. So I guess my concern is, and discussion, for discussion purposes, is whether or not we want to increase those small businesses by 25%, you know? So what it amounts to. But think about it, we'll talk about it at the, the next meeting.
What we, we're gonna talk about is the administrative fee. There's certain, some businesses you can't charge it to by statute. It's actually a fairly small number of people that you can legally charge it to. There's a list in the statute, there's a list of businesses that you are not allowed to charge an administrative fee to. So it doesn't apply to all businesses, is my point.
But, but what we, what we have here, it starts all of them, right?
Well, we can't, we just, all you did was adopt one, which is why I didn't bring it up, but it can only be charged to ones you're allowed to charge it to. And it's supposed to be tied, it's really supposed to be for those businesses that you regulate. And there are very few that we actually inspect and regulate.
Susan, you know that?
We had talked about...
Oh, you have? Okay.
We talked about that. There's a list of businesses in the statute. Well, there's a, there's a long list. You looked at it, we talked.
Mr. Beresford?
Could we have Mr. Wood, could we drag Mr. Wood to generate just how much revenue we're talking about? We might just say, you know, it's so little dollars, we just eliminate the whole thing. I don't know. But what are we talking about?
Thirty thousand dollars.
Either the ones we can assess it to...
Well, that would be if you charged it to every business.
Yeah, the everyone. Well, but how much is it to the ones we can charge it to?
I don't know.
I mean, it might only be a thousand dollars. We don't know. If we had that number, it would help us make a decision better.
The question would be, how much did we take in in revenues in that area in the previous couple of years?
Or how many would we be assessing at that point, obviously?
Could we get a little more information on that, Mr. Wood, relative to which businesses it is would be applicable to, and what the amount of revenue would be as it is, as far as the increase goes, if we leave everything just like it is? Yeah, I didn't realize we couldn't apply it to every, everybody. I didn't either.
We'll just have to look. I'll pull it all out again. I know I looked at it at one time.
Okay. Update on the Heritage Park master plan. Mr. Wood, do you have something you should share with us on that?
Well, I don't. I guess, last month, the mayor, y'all were called, suggested that we engage the firm to develop a master plan for Heritage Park. In considering various alternate approaches to that process, Ken Patton and I met a couple of times, in fact, with Liz Cole. Ms. Cole was the designer and the project manager for the park as it currently exists. And since she's got the greatest level of knowledge about the origin and the construction of the park, it seemed to us, or sensible, that if you did prefer, or do prefer, to go forward with the development of the master plan, that she would be the one that would be assigned that project. It cost us, and she provided to us, is $4,900 for that, for that master plan. And if that's the direction that council wants to go, we would ask for your authorization to enter their contract with her for that purpose, for her firm, which is AMEC, AMEC or AMEC.
Mr. Beresford?
I would think that we know what it would cost us to develop, to develop this master plan, but I don't think we should proceed until we have the Heritage Park, uh, park, you know, completely delineated, and know what we're gonna be putting in, not Heritage, but the Etowah, Etowah Park. And so we know what's in there and what it's gonna cost. That way, we can, when she works on developing a master plan for Heritage Park, at least she'll know what to complement that's in the other, on the other side of the river. So I would just say, put that on hold until we get the other park settled.
Mayor, she local? She is local, yes. Actually, landscape architect, I think, is what she is, actually. Yeah. It's AMEC is the name of the company that she works for. I would hope that she could coordinate that effort with what we are hopefully going to have in, with the Etowah River Park. It's, it's unfortunate, once again, that the Heritage Park has such little amount of really usable property. I mean, once again, we're there where floodplain covers the biggest majority of it by far. Because she already, from the design of the Heritage Park, she had all those maps, tow bows, and floodplain maps and all that. And it's, it's very, very limited. And, you know, if we wanted, she had, she had talked about, I think she could go ahead and do some things that really would not interfere and would still complement, maybe even the Etowah Park. But she was talking about, you know, the potential, there can be some playground equipment there. But also, she was talking about maybe a sort of a boardwalk type area running from the walking trails now out to the, near the bank of the river, where you could walk along the bank of the river to some degree and actually see the, the river itself. Because right now, of course, you don't see the river when you're walking around the trails. But just, and maybe, you know, people could go out there and maybe see it or whatever in good weather. You really couldn't build any, any big structures or anything out there. But you could have a way to walk out and have like a, not a dock over the river or anything, but along, along the river bank there. You know, I think, I think some of the stuff, I think, I think the amount that we can actually get in there is gonna be a fairly small, fairly small amount. Not nearly as much as you would think with the size of the park that's there. But, you know, anyone else have any comments? I mean, I'd like to share, go ahead and begin to take a look at it, knowing what we have in plan, in plan in general for the Etowah River Park.
Well, I guess, Mr. Mayor, the question I'd have, before we turn it over to her, she probably needs to have some type of idea of what we have available to spend. It makes a big difference to how she approaches her design or ideas or creative ideas. So I would think that we would need to get close to that.
Well, I would hope, I would hope that what would happen is that she would actually not just start designing something, but actually have a public hearing or so, and meet with the council, and have a public hearing, so that people can have input as what they would like to see there. And maybe what they would like to see should be incorporated into their, into our plan. And then, you know, I, my guess is, the needs for the park and the needs for the various facilities there, you know, could certainly be shown on the master plan, and then as we can fund it, you know, begin to do that. But I think what people want in that park is really what we ought to look at deciding in there to begin with. That's my guess.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Being that we kind of bandied about here a little bit, the Etowah Park.
Right.
I know it was not on the agenda, but I would like to be able to give an update.
Absolutely.
I had a meeting today with the county and Robbie, the architect. And you should have received, or will be receiving shortly, a letter from Commissioner Chairman Aaron's in reference to the park. And the concern that we did have is no longer a concern. We have been given a figure, which is the figure that we've been working with all along, $3,144,238 is our budget for the Etowah site. And that being said, we also met today with the railroad crossing issue. And we have a very good workable plan, and railroad will be working with us. And as it stands right now, we will not have to have the bells and whistles, which would run in the neighborhood of $150,200,000. So we've got that kind of side. Now, we have moved ahead with the plan. We have, we have a, just a knockout playground equipment for young kids and older kids. And the thing was, it was the top-of-the-line playground. And today, hopefully with the council's... And today, hopefully with council's approval, I suggested that we go with another one that was shown, that is a fantastic-looking playground equipment, everything, and saves us a hundred thousand dollars. So, I hope nobody has a problem. We were looking at around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that one has all the bells and whistles on it that we need for a great playground. And it's a big playground, lot room. And also, the process is, we're going to be meeting in another couple of weeks with a pretty doggone strong list of the items that we'll have. The bridge is still in there, and some other issues that we were looking at. And they will be finalized now and rolling now for bid. And then, when the bid come back, of course, council will be asked to approve the bids. Now, one of the things that was talked about in the economy of trying to put the two parks together, it was suggested that we use a joint bid process. Upon looking at crunching the numbers and saying who has what money's here and what money's there, it would become an accounting nightmare, although I'm sure our illustrious councilman, Mr. Cummings, would have been able to work through all those numbers. But it would behoove us to go separate bids, but one contractor could bid for both. And we will have our bid, and we'll know what that bid is and how we can work with it. So, things have progressed very good, and within another month or so, we should be ready to roll out with that aspect of it.
Sounds good.
I'd like to take a moment here. A week or so ago, we got notice from Mr. Bearford about some real problems with the financing of the, of the two parks. And I'd like to recognize John for a job well done. If he had any other council members here, I'm sorry if I overlooked, but I don't know who was on the committee, but he's done a heck of a job in turning that thing around in about a week's time, to where we got, I think, is very close, ready to go finally. But a week ago, you know, we had a call meeting, and it looked kind of, the cloud was dark over our heads, and we're not sure what we can do. So, I'd just like to compliment John on a job well done.
I would just add also to add that Commissioner Harry Johnson did an outstanding job in working with us and making an excellent program, so he should be recognized also.
Well, I think, I think you have done a good job, John, on that. And I would like to say, too, that I think it is very important how the council worked together and made a unified voice in, in our request of the county. And in doing that, I think, you know, with every council member signed that request to, John delivered back to the, to the county. So, working together, obviously, we can make things happen. Okay?
I'd like to ask, Mr. Bear.
Sure.
On the playground equipment that you're looking at, is it also child with disability type?
Yes, we got the ADA, ADA, yes. Sidewalks, walk, everything is.
Well, I appreciate, the reason I brought that up, I worked on this committee for four years, and we only have one park, an old camp, that has that. And so, I knew they were going to try to bring this in, and it's certainly a good thing, but wanted to make sure you had.
Okay. Anyone else? Under new business, discussion of garbage rates for seniors and permanently disabled. I believe our budget has included a, an increase in the garbage rates of, from seven fifty to eleven dollars for seniors and disabled persons. It would be my suggestion that we would need, at the next meeting, to authorize that increase with a separate resolution. Even though it's in the budget, as, as we approved the budget, I think it would be due us to make any change in those garbage rates by a resolution at the next meeting. Discussion of Commerce Boulevard, name change to Northside Cherokee Boulevard?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to say, let's move ahead on this. I think it's an excellent idea, and I would ask if it'd be all right for Mr. Huffman to step forward and give us a background on his research he's done on the name change. It does not impact anybody, but I'd like for him, if he would, if that's okay with council?
Final name.
Well, you need to vote on that anyway. We need to vote to make the decision.
All right. Those in favor, six to five, saying aye? Oppose, no? Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, thank you. When we started, when we first proposed the idea for Northside Cherokee, first thing we wanted to do was make sure that there was no impact. So, what we started out with is that we had polled of Canton Marketplace, we polled every user in Canton Marketplace, polled their address, their ownership, and every user inside Canton Place is actually addressed off the State Route 20. So, there's no impact whatsoever to Commerce over the change from the stand place of Canton Marketplace. We then went to Cherokee County GIS and proposed this to them as well, which they did research, including if the hyphen would work or not. And the Cherokee County GIS also went to Cherokee County 911. So, in essence, we went through every emergency management agency Cherokee County has, as well as researching existing properties, and there is no impact. And in essence, 911 and GIS both said that you can, of course, we would have to, with your approval, we would, in essence, apply for the road name change through you, but there is no impediment to that for public safety.
And the name, it was going to be Northside hyphen Cherokee Boulevard?
Boulevard, yes, sir.
Okay. I would like to offer to council that this will come up in two weeks on our regular voting, but again, we've been doing head nods. Let's get this done, so we can let them know that we appreciate what they do for us and get this underway. And I think there's two signs out there now that says Commerce under one of 120, and I think down, there might be two road signs with Commerce on it. Can you think of?
There's nothing on 140, yes, because we haven't quite-
No, no, I'm sorry. I said, excuse me, I didn't, 20.
State Route 20 has one still on it.
Has one, and then down at the, near the target.
I don't know if there's one there. Not sure, I've not seen it.
But if there is, we'll have two, and I propose that the city side department could stick those up without any-
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes, I should ask a question.
When are we going to have a groundbreaking? It was scheduled for August 1st, I believe.
Let me say this, groundbreaking is for people above my pay grade. But what I can promise you is, is that you don't have to drive very far. You can drive down State Route 20. You don't even have to go into Canton Marketplace and look back. And clearing is almost completed. They are going to start grading in about a week or so. The bridge has already started. It's, there's significant progress down there, although all you can do is get to the end of the road and just take a peek, but that's probably as far as you want to go. And I might add, this is what happened in Forsyth County as well, and Northside becomes a beacon for everyone. I think when, when the roadway gets poked through to 140, I think people are going to identify with Northside, just because it's a hundred-acre campus. There will be several, several multi-story buildings. And as is wherever Northside is gone, they always identify with whoever's close to where the hospital is. So, I think rather than saying that comes to Northside Hospital off of Commerce Parkway, it just makes, if I could suggest, it makes sense for the sign to have a Northside affiliation to it, so it's easy for them to be able to find the facility.
Agreed. Okay. So- Mr. Wood, do you have a, I'm sorry, are you through?
I'm never, I'm never through, but I was looking for a head nod, so we can let them-
I don't even think we need a head nod on that at this point.
No, I just wanted to ask what, what might be either the most profound and penetrating question of the evening, or the most foolish, I'm not sure which.
Be careful. It's just that we're in Cherokee County, and we are in Northside, and we're just trying to keep it clear, because, and they've done this over in Forsyth as well, but without the hyphen, I, it just seems that it would be a little bit more confusing to folks that have not come into the area before.
And that was the name of the hospital, Northside Cherokee, right? You said hyphen Cherokee?
Yes, yes.
The legal, the legal name is hyphenated, the hospital.
I don't, it isn't, okay.
Mr. Wood, be careful.
We're evaluating you.
I have the same question.
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Huffman? Okay? Thank you. They will be on the calendar for the next meeting. Okay. Discussion request by Jason Property owner to consider Cochran Lane abandoned. Is there, is there anything else that needs to be said on that? I mean, we did sort of discuss it.
The applicants, Mr. and Ms. Payne, with delays, they are here now, and if any of the council members have any questions of the folks that asked them to make the request, they are here now. But I think we have pretty well discussed it, the public input.
Do anyone have any questions you would like answered at this point? I mean, we did discuss it pretty thoroughly, I think, and the gentleman that was here in the public input period seemed to be, I don't know if he's still here or not, but seemed to be satisfied with, with the abandonment of it. So, we would bring, put this on the calendar then for, well, do you have anything you particularly would like to say other, okay. Well, we just put this on the calendar for action at the council meeting on, what, the 19th? 20th? Right, what is that, 16?
26th.
Yeah, 20th, on September the 20th, for, for action. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion concerning the restructure of the city's long-term debt. You going to do that, or Nathan's going to handle that one?
We've sent everybody a little spreadsheet that Nathan had worked up. I was at a state conference three months ago, and was approached by a representative of Merchant Capital, asking me about the possibility of repackaging some of our, some of our loans, and so, we looked at those. Nathan and I both have met with the Merchant Capital representatives, and then about two weeks ago, I guess it was, we went to Atlanta and met with the Piper Jaffray folks. If something is seriously in the works for the reservoir, that may need to be taken into account with respect to what we do or don't do in terms of these loans that are listed here. These are the loans that Nathan and then some of the bond agents feel would serve the best interest of the city to be refinanced. Merchant Capital is proposing this, as you can see in the spreadsheet, a public offering, which would go through a broker to anybody, and Piper Jaffray is proposing a private placement. Nathan is the expert on this. If you, if you've got some questions, you might, you might, Nathan, can you answer them? I think what we want is some direction from council about whether or not we should negotiate with either of these firms. We really necessarily want to negotiate with both of them, but if council wants us to proceed, we'll negotiate the best that we can with whichever of the firms and through whichever of the approaches council wants us to, I mean, public, private placement.
I would think that, that y'all could look at, staff could look at that and, and make a decision as to which direction they felt like needed to go, and come back, bring something back to us for consideration. I mean, I don't know that I'm going to get a clear understanding of all the intricate financial bond arrangements and so forth here, and get the staff to understand that and can bring it back to us. Mr. Rafferty?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is there, are you aware of any difference between the different, two different types of financing that are negative to doing one versus the other, versus private financing?
I think you're going to have, not as much reporting on those, on some private placement.
And that's correct.
Nathan? That's correct, Mr. Wood. The public offering that was proposed by Merchant Capital has a little bit more reporting requirements, so if you will, a few more hoops that you have to jump through, so the issuance costs tend to be a little bit greater than the private placement.
Many of the bonds that we have now have, have gone through private placement, right?
Yes, Mayor, you're correct.
Looking at the numbers, two quick things pop out. Number one, that the Piper Jaffray is approximately three hundred thousand dollars less in tow cost. And the second thing that I think is very important is the payments are skewed later, so the, the present value is definitely better with the Piper Jaffray than in the Merchant Capital in terms of, in terms of financing. So, that was the reason I asked about the, was there any negative, because looking at those two factors, I mean, it sort of looks to me like the Piper Jaffray is the one that appears to be the best financially, should we proceed.
I think that private can have variable loan rates often incorporated into those.
They can, and furthermore, they can have call options. They may sometimes, now, on a private offering, what the agent would do, the bond agent would do, is he would go out to the private banks, SunTrust, US Bank, those are a couple of the largest, just to name, name two, and he would put out bid proposals, and they would come to us, and, and some banks, some of the financial institutions may say to us, we want a no-call, no-call option for a certain amount of time that would limit the ability for us to call, which we, we've experienced on some of these. The public offerings won't have some of those limitations. So, you are correct, Mr. Cummings, that there's pros and cons both ways. And it's worth mentioning that both of these, both of these bond agents can proceed either way. Merchant Capital can of course go to the private market, and Piper Jaffray can do a public offering as well.
I would, I would hope that we would have, from what I've seen previously with the debt the city has, we would have a very short call period, and, and no kind, no penalties at all when you do the refinancing if you did that.
When, in, in my discussions with Piper Jaffray representative, that was one of the things that I, in my opinion stipulated, I said, we can't have very, all private placements going to have some call options, you know, whether it be just two, five years, but we can't limit ourselves beyond, you know, that standard.
Some of the ones that we've had in the past have had very much extended call periods.
Seven or ten.
Seven to ten years.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I believe Mr. Huffman was asking.
With the rates that we will be getting at this time with our economy in such a lousy shape, what's the likelihood that we would want to call?
Well, you know, I asked that same question to one of the representatives, and the story that he gave me was on one municipality he went to, they said the same thing, they ran it, and the rates continued to drop. And basically, you know, they weren't very happy with letting those call options remain in that private placement. So, the rates are historic, they've never been lower, but we don't know what the rates will continue to do.
Mr. Rafferty?
Since you said both of these, Merchant Capital and Piper Jaffray could go either way, why couldn't we compare apples to apples rather than two different ones on this page? In other words, show me bonds versus bonds and private versus private. Wouldn't that give us a better?
Interest rates are probably going to be at whatever interest rate's on any given day. Those are the respective approaches that those two agents were advocating for. So, their approach differences are what are reflected here. We could do what you said, but we, we've chosen not to. We've basically asked them to look at our loans and give us their recommendation, and those different approaches are what they have given us. So, but interest rates are going to be interest rates.
I would suggest that we let, let staff look at that, decide which one they would prefer to work with, if that, if they're both are equal, and to come back with a recommendation to us.
That's a good idea.
Okay? Anyone have any problem with that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. City manager report.
Just those three things, I'm thinking real quick from mayor and council. We are continuing to work on developing the mulcher areas, one at Southview Cemetery, one hopefully out here in the parking lot. We're still waiting on the permits for the public access area out at the reservoir. We're interviewing for the staff accountant position, and we will begin, I think, next week, interviewing for the staff engineer position. Infotech is continuing to work- Um, InfraTech is continuing to work on the design of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and improvements. I think those thirty percent design drawings are supposed to be submitted this week, aren't they, Dave? Isn't that right?
They're sending them out tomorrow.
Uh, Mr. Hatavian, in fact, met with EPD and InfraTech on, uh, a lot of part of last month regarding some financing for the wastewater plant. And EPD has indicated that there might be a categorical exclusion that the city would qualify for, uh, which would significantly simplify a loan application process, uh, for us. Uh, we have issued RF, uh, the request for bid for the sanctuary ceiling work that we've talked about. Uh, we're still trying to work toward being able to utilize, uh, that section of the, of this building. Um, Ken Patton, his staff working on the, uh, five-year update to the Liberal Center's initiative. Um, engineering, several things I can report to you real quick. Marietta Road, uh, the DOT has certified the right-of-way, uh, which is, as, as you know, on any drug project like that, takes an awful lot of time. So we're, could be happier to get that right-of-way certification and we have in fact received a notice to proceed with the bidding process from DOT on Marietta Road. Uh, we've talked to you before about the, uh, low fire flows that we got out off of State Route 140. This is out off Lower Scottville Road. Uh, we're in the process of having, uh, a looped design that would, that would loop two systems there. We're thinking, uh, that call will probably come in, um, under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We, we've talked about some of that during the budget. Um, the extension of, uh, what is currently Commerce Boulevard, I guess will soon be Northside Hyzer Cherokee, uh, is under construction. Uh, canoe launch at Brown Park, uh, Jovi West has been working hard on that and is hoping to begin work, if we can get all of our permits by the end of September, to begin work in October on that. Elit station maintenance, the, uh, we're in the process of preparing a maintenance schedule and the budget. Full of those stations were cleaned last week and that's all just there.
Thank you. I only have one, one item that I wanted to mention, uh, you know, it's sort of a sad evening tonight because we are going to be losing someone who's been, been here at almost every meeting for a long time. So Crystal, we are going to be missing you. She's moving on to, to a, a, a new job as, as, I guess she's going to be managing the, the Woodstock Town Lake Patch. And I'd like to say, you've done a great job for us here and we appreciate your reporting and very fair. Couldn't complain too much, you know? So we wish you, certainly wish you well at, at your new, new position and let you know that we will miss you here.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
Senator Fager?
Aye.